I call the Subcommittee on Diversity, Inclusion, and Minority Women-Owned Business Enterprises to order. And it's great to see everyone today. Before we move into our action and information items, I'd like to give a big shout out to the staff Hector, Mohamed, and Martin for organizing another highly successful MWBE SDVOB conference that was held on May 24th. I was delighted to participate in this year's conference with Chairman Thompson and fellow trustees Kevin Kim and Myra Lanaris Garcia. CUNY has a long tradition of commitment to embracing and supporting diversity in all aspects of what we do. The conference embodies our deep commitment that the doors of the university are open now and moving forward. Diversity makes us better, stronger, and more resilient. It is the key to achieving enduring excellence and innovation. When NWBEs and SDVOBs do well, all of New York does well. And the people we care so much about, our students, our students will benefit. Thank you to everyone who was involved in the planning and who participated in making us stronger. We will now take up the following items for approval. Action 1A is the approval of the minutes of the March 27, 2023 meeting. I move for the approval. Do we have?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. With no policy items on the agenda, I will address the information items. There are two information items on the agenda. Information 2A is the recruitment strategies for a diverse workforce. Vice Chancellor for University Human Resources, Dorian Gray, will present this item.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Gloria, thank you. Okay. Well, wrong book I was reading. My apologies.
I hope not in any other book. I wanted to, we spend a lot of time talking about some of our statistics and our current workforce. And I wanted to take a little bit of a different angle on today. And just talk a little bit about another really key part of our diversity picture, and that is recruitment. So key to our strategy is how we recruit, where we recruit. And I want to share a little bit of information with you along those lines today. So CUNY's university HR group does have a small team that works on recruitment and diversity issues and supports the university in centralized support for recruitment and hiring. Diversity officers we work with quite often, our hiring managers, and all of our college campus HR people. We receive over 300,000 completed job applications a year for as many as 1,500 posted job vacancies. We've got about 300 job vacancies posted as we speak. This group works on consulting, training, data analysis, and reports. It provides tools and technologies that are easier to coordinate centrally and fosters partnerships with other organizations to facilitate outreach. We also will assist job applicants with general questions they may have, people with disability who may need assistance, and also responsible for troubleshooting and maintaining our recruitment technology. So of course, with fiscal constraints, it's particularly important that we use our money wisely. And it can be very expensive to do outreach. Recruitment websites abound, and they are not inexpensive. Places like Glassdoor, et cetera, for, you know, key pricing. And but we do need them in order to provide sufficient outreach. So we're very selective about who we work with. And this just gives you an idea of some of the places that we work with on a really regular basis. Of course, if we find free places, we certainly use them. But they are becoming fewer and further between. However, our partnership with the city in particular has been particularly helpful for us in finding avenues of outreach. And we've used this in a variety of different ways. So for example, Direct Employers Association Network. This includes New York State, federal sites, veterans workforce sites, college career officers, and aggregators. And these are like the Googles indeed, where they pick up all of these different listings and bring them forward. So we found that very helpful. Of late, we've been working more with New York State Department of Labor. They will sponsor jobs for us. They will even do online job fairs for us if we ask. All you have to do is tell them what you need, and they're extremely helpful in partnering. And then another one that we use a lot is HERC. And this is specifically really for higher ed, and it has an emphasis on professional associations and diversity. And LinkedIn, of course, everybody knows. And it's sort of hard to even be a recruiter today without some sort of LinkedIn. But LinkedIn has gotten more and more expensive over the years, not less, but we still find that it is very usable for us if we use it in a very selective way. And then we have a number of different resource directories, which is information on additional sources for targeted search. And one of the things that we've looked at, so for example, on here you'll see that we have an accessible careers page with features to recruit veterans. So for people with disabilities, an accessible page allows them to read in the same way that we would and to view things in the same way that we would without that assistance. And this is a veteran's occupational translator. So it actually helps people figure out what they did based on the service, how that might translate into various occupational groups. Veterans are a particularly difficult group to recruit. The percentage of veterans in New York City is quite low. And you usually will find that in major cities, sadly, because many veterans do not come home to very high-paying jobs. And so they tend to live in less expensive areas. So it's a real challenge for people in New York City to be able to access the veterans pool. This is an example where we've recently had some luck with the city and partnering particularly with Public Safety, for example, with the Veteran Services Group of the mayor's office. So we're hoping to expand that partnership and others like it. So if we take a look at where our visits come from, so this is one particular job, and it had over 1,000 visits. So you can imagine the type of volume that we're receiving. Now, not all 1,000, of course, are going to apply. But just the 1,000 visits, if we drill down there, we can really start to see where they're coming from and how they reached us. And then that helps us channel our money and our resources back into those places where we're really finding that we're getting the hit. So the top ones are probably not surprising. Our own site, one of the nice things about being a very large and visible employer is that people will think of you, sometimes on their own, without even necessarily stumbling across you on some other site. They'll say, let me think of big employers, you know, CUNY's one, and I'm going to go there. So we get a lot of people who come directly to our own site. LinkedIn is a second, although really a distant second to a certain extent, and indeed. So we use a lot of the main ones. And then you'll see some of the smaller ones as well. Glassdoor, GE Member Microsite, HERC, as I mentioned, et cetera. So over the last 24 months, and actually it's slightly outdated only because we had actually prepared this probably two months ago. But if you really look at the pattern, that's what you really want to see. And you can see how job views have risen. And you can also look at, of course, where we were in the post-COVID world, right? So during COVID, job searching pretty much fell off the face of the earth. All the numbers went crashing down, even then so many jobs went vacant. Now that's turning around again. I think we all know that. It is a buyer's market to a large extent. People looking for jobs are in a very good position. And this just shows the details of where we've been over the past 24 months. And you can see the pattern. And it does traditionally follow really what we have seen in the New York City area and region as well. So the general economic condition is a main driver of this. Of course, the number of jobs that we have and the fact that we have coverage throughout the New York City area is a real plus for us in terms of being able to yield a strong job view. This just gives you an example of one of the teams that we work with quite a lot. And they will give us things like networking opportunities, training, toolkits. They help us with affirmative action. Diversity outreach is very, very specific to higher ed diversity. And then this is something that we've just recently built, and it looks like it's really being used quite a bit. What we've done is, so there's currently 1,400 entries into this resource directory. And what we do is we put in, God, I mean, just so many different places where you can post specific jobs. So in this case, a campus was saying that they were looking for places to post positions where they would attract Asian-Americans, for example. And so we were able to provide, and put that in, and then provide a list of resources that are geared toward that particular demographic. And this was home-built, so it's not pretty, but it is really useful and works very well. And campuses are starting to use this quite a bit. And the plus of it is that as people use it, they add to it. And so the database grows exponentially from within. And as I said, it's all internally built. And just a couple of examples of where we've brought all of these things to bear in order to bring in a diverse workforce, especially when we have a large campaign going on. So this had to do recently with the CUNY Inclusive Economy Initiative. And we needed to hire quite a number of people at a very short period of time. And they were going to be located across the campuses. So traditionally, recruitment is done by each campus. But in this particular case, we worked with Lauren Anderson and Industry Partnerships. And we put out all of the messaging. And then we basically translated and referred as we got the candidates to the campuses so that we were able to sort of upfront screen for them and put out the word so that we weren't duplicating efforts. And we were able to shave off a lot of time. Shaving off time is really crucial in a market that is driven by people who have lots of options. And in a very large system, time can be difficult to reduce. But we found that if we split up some of the work and do certain things centrally and certain things with the campuses, particularly where there's a big outreach, we're able to really shave a fair amount of time off. And that's what we were able to do in this particular case. So we worked with these industry specialists in each department, and we were able to support the job hosting process. And we worked with the New York State Department of Labor as well, and we were able to fill all 28 positions within the timeline that we originally had. And then another one I would just share would be a case study where we did with Public Safety. This was probably earlier on. And we worked with marketing and communications and the Public Safety Office and Recruitment and Diversity. And we put together a pretty robust program and site in order to pull in more people from different resources and different places. And it's just a really good and successful example of what you can do when a lot of groups work together to pull in the same direction for filling really hard, really hard-to-fill jobs. That is all I wanted to share. Hope that was helpful. If there are any questions.
Yeah, I have some questions. So the recruitment here that's presented is associated predominantly with CUNY Central recruiting?
I'm going to end up not being able to hear you again. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I'll speak louder.
Okay, thank you.
So the presentation, everything is talking mostly about CUNY Central recruiting versus on-campus?
No, it's a partnership. So, thank you for that. No, it's a partnership. But this is developed by the small group of people that are central, and they do recruitment and diversity work that supports the campuses. But the campuses traditionally do their own recruitment. So this was sort of a foray into a new direction where Central would help support them up to this certain point of bringing the people in. And then the campuses would sort of take it from there.
So in terms of just kind of understanding vacancy rate, so within CUNY Central, what's kind of the vacancy rate right now? And what has it been historically? And I always ask this because, you know, the city has had a lot of challenges hiring people. It's a national labor shortage issue. And we've been trying all sorts of strategies, including big hiring halls. And we're finally making headway. So I just kind of wanted to understand because I know when we had a previous audit meeting, it was a while back, but we heard about the hiring challenges. So I wanted to make sure whatever we can offer in terms of the strategies we had used, if that's not being deployed now, that we can share resources?
Okay, I appreciate that. We don't, I couldn't really tell you exactly what the vacancy rate is, unfortunately, because what tends to happen is we don't close our vacancies, we don't always close our vacancies out because we don't have one centralized system that tracks. It's going to depend on each campus and whether they close out. If it's manually, it's less likely it's going to be kept up to date. This is one of the things that when we have our new system, everyone will be on the same applicant tracking system. And then it would be very simple to figure out. So I apologize, I can't actually.
And when's the new system coming into place?
Well, that'll be, that's part of the whole ERP.
The ERP that's going to the board.
Got it. And then how do we, are there restrictions with civil service titles on when people get hired here?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, but what we have found we can do, like for Public Safety, for example, we can increase the number of people that actually take the test. And that's where we have struggled before. So the outreach has brought more people into the hiring pool. And the more people in the hiring pool, the higher the number we have that lasts through the end. So we have factually found that our hiring pool activity has increased significantly since we started doing more outreach.
And you could add to the, we did something with technology where we opened it up in the campuses, right? We're doing a lot more in that space, at least on the public safety side.
Yes, that is correct.
And what about entry-level jobs? Do they require civil service as well?
No, some of the positions do not. And in which case, of course, we don't have to worry about the exam, in which we've just filtered them through right into the hiring process. But the ones that have the exams are the ones that we've actually struggled with the most.
And then last question, so.
Let me, I just have one thing. And I think one of the other struggles for us is that we're relying on the city and the state to pull out tests. So in a lot of cases, when they, you know, we had issues with sergeants, lieutenant, and other lines. So unless, Dorian has been working on trying to get the city. But really, at the end of the day, we're relying on when they put that list out. And it's very complicated.
Just last question. So when we hire at CUNY Central, for example, what kind of outreach do we do to our own CUNY students to let them know about job opportunities here?
So I think that is a huge missing link, honestly. And I think with Lauren Anderson here, we've actually started talking about that. And we have selected a few positions to try to make a, you know, foray into. And IT is definitely one of them. Some of those are classified titles, in which case we do have to still deal with the hiring pool and how all of that works. But our own CUNY students, never even mind as interns, I mean, they are really a tremendous pool to funnel them, you know, sort of right back in. And, you know, we've talked about a variety of things, particularly with areas like Public Safety, where we could maybe build some sort of, you know, tuition forgiveness, or if people, you know, sign on to do this for a year, then they get that back for it. So there are a lot of things we can do with that. And I think with Industry Partnerships having the support it does now, that we're in a much better position to move that forward.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Is there a way to apply for exemption to policy? So if there's something established, especially if we want to get students to participate? We have so many students who need to have some opportunity. Is there a way to apply for an exception to policy within the system itself so that CUNY runs smoothly?
Yeah, I mean, there are certain qualifications for exemptions that we can look at. Just being a CUNY student automatically doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily one of them. Although when it's not engaged in civil service, we can certainly create a different path into CUNY for them. For the others, it has to be something based on, like, for example, we have a 55A program. People with disabilities can come directly in as opposed to going through a number of the steps in the civil service. But for our own students, we have more ability to do that in the jobs that we directly control and don't have to, you know, go through the certification or exam process.
Would it make sense, because CUNY is such a large system within itself and where we have so many struggling students, for us to come up with something that we can present to the city and ask that it become an exemption to quote "civil service" policy in order to bring in students who are supporting families? Can't do, but that we can help in many ways to participate? Is there a way, would you be able to present something through our secretary to the board that we can examine along with our council? Because I don't want us to exempt legal issues so that we have a council so that we can put it forward and then come to the city with something that is going to be substantial and that will work?
I think that's certainly something worth considering. I'd be happy to talk to Lauren about that.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we do that?
I think you will have full support of that, by all means. And it would be a great opportunity to be able to see how best that we can add that to the next, perhaps, agenda to continue to move that forward for the students.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other?
I mean, sorry, one last thing. So that challenge you mentioned, CEO Batista, you mentioned the city and the state has to come up with the exams for the roles that CUNY needs. Is there something, and I don't know the civil service laws around this, but is there a way we can really push to have them provide the exams just for CUNY lines that are really in need for a particular year? And how can we push that? How can we get them to give the exams that CUNY needs?
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, start.
So we have, we have two tiers, right? We have CUNY-issued exams that are only for CUNY because we're not New York State Civil Service. We're municipal, so in separate. So some we have to go through DCASTs, and some we can control ourselves. The ones that we go through DCASTs is where we need more of the support. And we've made some strides. And we do have a good relationship with them. Our Director of the Civil Service Unit came from DCASTs. So we've gotten closer. But there are certain exams that we need or that we're waiting for, and, you know, they're not ready. They'll say like, it'll be, you know, 18 months from now. I think 18 months, like, how are we going to make it from here to there? So definitely, I think the relationship with DCASTs is better. But there are still some exams that we don't have sufficient control over, not as bad as effect.
And when we have vacancies, we try to claim the whole hardship piece. And, you know, it's been challenging. The other thing that you should know, we've been working with the state because the state is having the same problem, helping them, their Civil Service Commission find a home in New York City because they're trying to, and so they're looking at some of our facilities. But through that journey, we've been trying to work with them. And recently, we had a meeting with the chancellor where we talked about with Lauren Anderson, should we try to double down a little bit more and try to provide classrooms? Because what the state is facing is that people are failing the tests. So we should begin to address those issues. So we're working with our provost to try to figure out how we could, you know, support, so to make sure we, because we have that problem in public safety. We get great candidates, they don't pass certain parts of it. So I think it's something that we're, really are focused on right now. But the other thing I also want to mention is you say you have some ideas. And if you could share that with us, the more that we could get from learning from your, you know, your best practices, that would be extremely helpful. So thank you.
Any further discussion, please?
Hello, everyone. I think it would be interesting to see kind of.
I'm sorry, did you pick up to your microphone?
You have to yell.
Thank you.
I think your microphone's on there.
Okay. So I think it would be interesting to have kind of a list of some kind of visual of different opportunities CUNY students could potentially take as a beginning of the work to engage them more. Because I think that if the board can envision it, if the board can see it, then we can start having that conversation more effectively to see how, what they were talking about, we could have a portion specifically for CUNY students. But first, I think the first step would be to be able to see different areas they could be involved in.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Gloria.
I just had one quick question.
We'll bring it back to the floor, by all means.
This is sort of faculty-specific, though, so I'm not sure if it's congruent. I'm sorry, Gloria, sorry. This is faculty-specific, so I'm unsure if it's congruent with your report. But I really appreciated the comprehensiveness of the, especially the analytics, enhanced outreach. Do we have something comparable for the way in which we outreach for faculty positions?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we do. Okay, great.
Yeah, all those numbers included. HERC in particular is very faculty-oriented, absolutely.
Okay, okay. Because traditionally at CUNY, it's HR manages, on each campus manages the hires.
Yes.
And that has become, if not has always been a bit of a, in other words, discipline-specific hires don't seem to be happening. In other words, for math, math jobs.
Right.
English, MLA.
Okay.
Those, I was just curious as to whether the, my understanding is that the HR departments are in complete control, which considering recent pushes for a variety of, you know, diversity, right? Perhaps puts us at a disadvantage when you're not engaging discipline-specific outreach, which is really, you know, this, I love this chart that you've.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, no, that's an interesting point. I mean, I think part of what happens with the faculty is that that is so much the search committee model that, I mean, you are right, that a lot of it does not emanate out of HR the way that some of the more traditional hiring does. Yeah, and so we'll discuss that.
Yeah, thank you. Because it would be great to incentivize the faculty, especially with our recent push for hiring. It would be great to incentivize faculty to make the decisions they need to make for, you know, collegial and department and university needs in, you know, at the intersection of diversity.
Just my experience.
Thank you.
With, thank you. But with that, we're going to proceed to information item 2A, which we completed. And now we will proceed with information item 2B, is the CUCF MWBE program. Vice Chancellor for Facilities Planning, Construction, and Management, Mohamed Akhala, will make a presentation on the program.
Thank you, Trustee Wilken. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this information to you. We brought some updates on the MWBE program that we follow. And so we'll share with you, we'll start by sharing with you the performance, the numbers for the past three years. Then we'll follow with the MWBE reports that we submit every year. Some of the reports are submitted annually, some are quarterly. So you will look at those briefly. Then we'll speak to you about the process, the MWBE process for both CUCF and DASNY since the capital program. Some of the projects are delivered by CUNY, DASNY since the capital program. Some of the projects are delivered by CUNY and the majority is delivered by DASNY, so we'll go through this process. And then, before we conclude, we'll share with you some success stories of MWEBE vendors. We'll present to you about nine of them, of the vendors, and some of the projects that they completed successfully for us. So, before we start our program, MWEBE program is summarized to be seeking a goal of 30% MWEBE. So, we develop this and we, we deliver it through all of our projects via requirements and via the follow-up. In, in these slides, we're sharing with you the previous performance and the utilization rate. On the top chart, we're speaking about the past three fiscal years towards a target of 18% MBE and 12% WBE. And you see within the red square there, the past three years achieving over 38%. In the bottom chart, we're presenting the numbers quarterly for this fiscal '22, '23, quarter 1, 2, 3, and the total at the end reaching 37.62%, which is quite higher than the target of 30%. In this slide, we're sharing the performance in the SDVOB. While the target is 6%, there are some challenges in finding those vendors. So, the performance for 20, 122 is about 1.53%. There are some work that the team recognized that we need to work on with our vendors. And hopefully, as you, as you mentioned, the conference that we have and the outreach we do would be fruitful and bring more participation. Now, I wish to move into the reports. And as I said, annual reports, quarterly reports. So, the annual task, the annual report that usually submitted is the MWEBE goal plan that is due January 15. And then we have three quarterly reports that are submitted, the integrated report, the workforce utilization, and the MWEBE utilization reports. And all of these reports are submitted to the New York State Empire State Development, for short, ESD. Now, in the next few slides, I will speak to you briefly about every report and how it's submitted. So, first with the annual report, which is the annual goal plan. This plan is uploaded to the New York State Contract System, or the NYSCS. And the, establish the goal, as we mentioned in the previous slide, 18% MBE and 12% WBE. And in this report, we provide a few pieces of information, including the projection of the fiscal year expenditure, personnel, process, procedures, also an overview and a description of the procurement strategy, samples of the language that we use in the, in our process, some of the outreach of efforts, such as the, the conference that was held on June 24, and the four-year growth plan that we're looking at. So, those information are submitted every year to the ESD as the annual report. Then, as I mentioned, there are three reports that are submitted quarterly. And the first one of them, we call it the integrated report. And in this integrated report, we'll provide summary of the information about discretionary purchasing that we perform through the quarter, some waivers, if any, or liquidated damages, if any. So, and we have a snapshot here of a partial shot of the report that is submitted. But that is the report that we submit quarterly. The, the second quarterly report that we submit as well is about workforce utilization. And in this report, we provide some demographic info about the staff or the employees or the workers that work for either the prime contractor or the subcontractors, particularly the registered MWEBE vendors. And it provides information about the gender, the race, ethnic identification, and this information is submitted. The third report submitted is the quarterly utilization, and that is one of the important reports that we provide the MWEBE information, again, on the NYCS system for the actual utilization of the trades. And we will have more information on slide 13 and 14 when we, we talk about the process of the MWEBE program. We will, we'll see how this information is gathered and submitted. So, those are the three quarterly reports and the one annual report that we submit. Now, we'd like to share with you the MWEBE process for both CUCF and DASNY. Now, we'll first talk about CUCF, our process. So, the first step is the goal setting for the solicitations. So, for all of our solicitations, we include the goal of 30%. And this goal will be included, or these requirements are included in our advi, advertisements, included in the solicitation documents, and also included in the executed contract or task order. So, we make sure that, that is included everywhere. And on the right side of the screen there, we have assembled RFP language that we use. And you see there the language that we submit to ensure that contractors do understand the goal and their obligations. The second step is we get the utilization plan. And the utilization plan submitted on a form, we call it Form 1, and there is a partial screenshot of this form there. And that is collected in the pre-award phase. So, before an award is made to the contractor, we identify the MWEBE subcontractor that will be utilized and how the contractor, the prime contractor plan to achieve 30% or more, to achieve the goal. So, that is provided in very detail. Following that, we get the quarterly compliance report by the contractor. And this is the slide 13 that we spoke about earlier, that provide the details of how we gather this information. So, our team work on the detail, our accounts payable team, our procurement team, they work collaboratively to look at the, the aggregate of the quarterly payments to the contractor, confirm that those payments went to MWEBE subcontractors. And if there are contractors who did not submit this utilization, we reach out to them and we make sure that it is submitted. And if, if there are some contractors who do not achieve the goal, we, it's included in the, in the contract that payments may be withheld, which did not happen in the past. The next step is the utilization data. So, these records will be entered again into the ESD system to confirm the vendors. And the total expenditures for CUCF is also entered into the system. And the NYSCS will generate the utilization rate based on the information that is provided. And this will, will conclude the CUCF process from A to Z. DASNY follow a similar process whereby in the goal requirements also is included in the notice to bidders advertisement, including in the information for bidders in the documents, included also in the general conditions of the contract documents, and also of the notice of intent to award letter. So, it's, make sure it's included in all of the steps of the procurement process. Then DASNY also have the utilization plan submitted by the prime contractor or consultant through the statewide utilization management plan section of the NYSCS system. And the utilization plan will have to be completed and approved before a contract is awarded. Also, in terms of reporting, DASNY will have an audit generated in the NYSC system whenever a vendor is paid. And based on that audit, will confirm the payment amount and will confirm the vendor that have received those kind of, of payments. And DASNY is required to report quarterly as well to the ESD, all agency expenditures and MWEBE utilization. So, this we have provided you with the, with the, with the process we take, with the reports that is being issued. And now, we'd like to share with you some of the success stories of MWEBE vendors. As I said, we brought a sample of nine.
Vice Chancellor, I mean, before you go... Just to go forward, may we just, may have some questions?
I think just in the interest of time, do the success stories have anything like a particular story, or is it just laid out in the slides?
It's laid out in the slides.
Okay. So then, could I go back and just ask you a question on the first slide that you, or the...
The very first?
Well, not the very first. The one that lays out the numbers, the MWEBE performance. So, I think, couple of questions. Number one, I think it would be really helpful as a suggestion going forward, if you could please present the fiscal year '23 alongside the fiscal years so that we can compare more visually instead of, I mean, I, I found myself doing math instead of that. If you could just lay it out. And then, I think we can then see a trend a little easier. And then, secondly, just curious as to why in the other three fiscal years, you laid out the MBE and WBEs, but on the fiscal year '23, you just combined it with an MWEBE and then related to that. I think within the city, you know, we spend a lot of money every so years doing a disparity within a disparity study to find, even within the MWEBE world, what potential disparities you may see with the different ethnic groups. So, for example, the past disparity study would show that black, Latino, and Asian women-owned businesses fell behind the Asian men and white women-owned businesses. And so, because it's a public study, it's being done, I'm kind of, I think, really wanting to see the different breakdowns within these numbers to show and reflect a full set of data that we can just be aware of to see how, if there are community-owned cer, certain communities that aren't getting as many contract opportunities, for example, or we need to do more capacity building. It's something just to know. And I know the city's doing it, so I don't know if the state's doing a disparity study, or if that's all rolled into one. Or, you know, from your perspective, just breaking that down for us in the public document, because I'm sure you have that record and data, that would be, I think, very helpful for this committee.
Sure. If the information is available, we'll look at the system and we'll, we'll be happy to break it down and provide it, yeah.
Trustee Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that, to look at what the inter-agency connections are, whether DASNY, Empire State Development Corporation, whose certification contracts within CUNY lies under. And if so, what can we do to make it so that especially minority contractors can have a readout on what it is we're trying to do to build their base of economic stability? I worked for Empire State Development Corporation. I was head of Brooklyn. And I almost had to go block to block to find folks who were ready to be trained to participate in state contracts. So, I just want to know, CUNY has enough folks within the system that could many way lead to make sure, whether it's DASNY or Empire State Development Corporation, that contractors, and I'm more, more concerned about our students who graduate, who looking for opportunities, and who we can steer into these opportunities. How we best do that and make sure that when our students graduate, they can see themselves getting into something that they probably never even thought of in their classroom. So, is there a, a way that we can work with CUNY to make sure that we work with these agents and have this inter-agency connection so that we're able to expand and make sure not be strengthened?
Maybe I can share that with the committee here. Really, Trustee Clark, who has been one of the best advocates, for sure, for MWBEs and SDVOBs, and her legacy precedes you. But really about capacity building. And that is one thing that we, we should look at in terms of both our ability to help the entrepreneurs and the firms that are, have the opportunity to, to do business with CUNY. It's probably not an area that we have necessarily focused on, but with the partners that we have, I think that's a very good area to, you know, that may require further, further discussion. And, and clearly in terms of Trustee Kim's analysis, to be able to break down. Though, that's been somewhat typical now, which is a good thing, at different agencies, both on a city level and, and the state level, to really fine tune the firms that are in fact doing business with, with CUNY. So, we can see the gaps and see the analysis and, and make sure that the opportunities are, that we do the outreach, as Trustee Clark has indicated, that, that is so needed here to, to continue what we're, what we're doing in that regard. But...
So, a couple of things. On, on what Trustee Kim said, obviously, we, we could break these numbers in multiple ways. It would be helpful, maybe offline, to get a little bit more, right? So, we could, you know, present that to, to all of you. I think on the, on the, on the point that Trustee Clark, we're not set up that way, right? So, there are agencies that, that their mandate is to do the capacity building. And what I, what I don't, what I don't want to do is make a commitment to the board or something that we're not set up to do. What I will say, we, we will do, Mohammed and I will go and meet with those agencies and try to identify ways that we could help expand that into the communities where CUNY is, right? To try to make sure, to your point, Trustee Clark, to make sure that our students and whoever else in the community is taking advantage of, of that. And, and we will commit and come back to report to the board. And if the board wants us to do something else, then we will try to, try to do something else. But right now, the, the capacity for us to do, I know exactly what you used to do, because I remember that job, right? In my career, right? So, you know, a pass half cross, that we will go and report back to the board and, and try to do. Because, for example, Trustee Kim's agency is one of those agencies that sort of does that. They're, they're funded to do that. So, we'll, we'll go and try to figure out how we could get sort of our people more involved in that.
I'm not asking that we reinvent the wheel. I'm looking at possibilities that we have not taken, we have not taken into consideration. And it's not to say, you may not be set up for it, but you may need a reset. And if we need a reset, do we have the ability and the capacity here to look into? And my focus is on students graduating and having to sit around and figure out, if I did this, or I, I was introduced to this course, would I be able to be set on a different course? So, I'm looking at CUNY as a whole. How do we set our students on different courses based on what is going to be available to them and what they may be interested in?
I think we're saying the same thing.
We're saying the same thing. Say hallelujah then.
You know, the reason why, just going forward, make, getting this data out and presented with the disparity study kind of numbers and all the breakdowns as detailed as possible is because up in Albany, this past legislative session, they just passed the reciprocity bill. And so, what's going to happen is you're going to have New York State and New York City, more than ever, having firms that are both mutually, hopefully, and the MOU has to be signed up and written up and, and negotiated. But in an ideal world, now that we're getting closer and closer, you're no longer just looking at New York State firms that are certified. You may be now having to include all the New York City firms that haven't been yet state certified, if this reciprocity MOU goes the way some of us want it to go. And, and that's why, I think, being really prepared with understanding the detailed breakdown for a, a committee like this and for CUNY as a whole system is very important now.
Trustee, just, that is so key. And that was something that we need to, as Martin and I were just talking about prior to the meeting, that we will see the legislation that both the state has moved forward on and what the impact and the opportunities that are there for, for the MWBE SDVO program. So, thank you for mentioning it. I know time is very tight. I will, do we have another minute?
You're eight minutes over. And we started nine minutes late, so.
Okay.
We were on time.
I think in to good, to really do the right opportunity here, we'll table the success stories. And perhaps we'll have even more for the next meeting, because we don't want to necessarily hold up at, at this point. But, once again, this is the new generation of the, of the, that the chairman had put in place in terms of what's so important to New York. And we clearly see the impact of that. So, thank you, Vice Chancellor Akhala, for what you have presented today and for the questions that are so, so important to get, get out and get answered. So, with that, before we finish, are there any other questions that, please?
Yes. Hello, everyone. I wanted to follow up on the mentorship that was an idea the last few meetings that we... the last few meetings that we talked about for the CUNY students? And if that's something we plan on continuing on doing or if it already launched?
Okay. Um, if, uh, let's bring that up going forward in terms of the mentorship programs. I think we can discuss it further at one point.
Okay.
Okay. Anything? Okay. All right. Thank you. So, with no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Uh, no.
All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.